Good evening. Today is Monday, October 8th, 2018, and we're here for the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Our opening ceremony will be presented by the Mount Pleasant Area High School Air Force Junior ROTC Cadets. Please rise.
All right. Out. Face. Present. Arms. Order. Arms. Out. High. Face. Foot. High.
Representative Hickory Ridge High School's Speaker. I want to start to make a way here for Emily Perchuis.
On soprano saxophone. Katrina O'Orfichi on alto saxophone. Jonathan Stitler on tenor saxophone. And Cameron Burnett on baritone saxophone. The director at Hickory Ridge is Mr. Chris White.
Thank you, Mr. Turbot. I would also like to introduce the Air Force Cadets who are here present. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Trinity Ramos. Cadet Major Eric Lozano. Cadet Captain Jacob Dillon. And Cadet First Lieutenant Leah Wise. So we thank them for their service at this young age. I'd also like to welcome Deputy Jacob Barrier from Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Thank you for being here. Board members, we have the agenda. Before you do I have a motion to adjac- the agenda is presented.
So move.
Second.
So Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mr. Sheumaker seconded.
Mr. Kirk made the motion.
I'm sorry. They're shaking heads over there. So Dr. Kirk made the motion. Mr. Sheumaker made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries six zero. We'll start with recognitions and welcome Mrs. Glenda Jones.
Good evening, board members. We'd like to start with the recognition of our Principal of the Year. I'd like to ask Dr. Louder if he would please come forward. And I'd also like to ask Cory Cochran, who is our Principal of the Year, and the Principal of Mount Pleasant Elementary School to come forward with his family. And any other administrator.
Yes.
Congratulations to Cory Cochran, Principal of Mount Pleasant Elementary School, who's been selected as the 2019 Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year in a program sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and Wells Fargo. Cochran was surprised, isn't that right? He was surprised with an announcement during a Mount Pleasant Elementary School staff meeting on Thursday, September 20th. Cochran has been Principal of Mount Pleasant Elementary School since 2002. He graduated from Concord High School, began his tenure in Cabarrus County Schools as a social studies teacher at Mount Pleasant High School in 1990, and moved to Wyancourt Elementary School as an Assistant Principal in 1998. Mr. Cochran holds a bachelor's degree in Religious Studies from Wake Forest University, teacher certification from North Carolina Wesleyan College, and a master's degree in school administration from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. Mr. Cochran will now compete with other Principals across the state for the North Carolina Principal of the Year. After the state selection process is completed, one Principal will be selected in the 2019 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. CCS Principals nominate among their peers. A selection panel is comprised of CCS administrators, and they interview the finalists, and a winner is selected. Each regional Wells Fargo Principal of the Year receives a thousand cash, $1,000 cash award for his or her school, and a $1,000 cash award for personal use. The 2019 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year receives $3,000, this is to entice you to complete the portfolio, for his or her school, and $3,000 for his personal use. Regional award recipients will be selected by February 2019, and the state-level winner will be announced in the spring at a special luncheon in Raleigh. We want to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Cochran as our CCS 2018-19 Principal of the Year. Cory, before you take your entourage through to shake hands, would you share with us who you have with you?
All right. I have my wife, Amy. And my Assistant Principal of many years, Deborah Burris. And these next four staff members have, or five of these have been with me all my time here at Mount Pleasant Elementary. I have Krista Saxman, who you'll see again later. Amber Couch, Wendy Duke, Kathy Dennis, and Jessica Shue, Sherry Christie, Anne Marie Fur, who you'll see again in a little bit, and James Wilson, who you will see again.
Step out and then go through the line. You can go through and shake hands too. Oh, come on. If you don't want to, you can go back to your seat. That's fine. Be definitely concerned about what must be. And we would like to recognize our Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Danielle Lucas, who is the Assistant Principal at Royal Oaks Elementary School. Danielle, if you and your administrator and any family members would come forward, please. Congratulations to Danielle Lucas, Assistant Principal at Royal Oaks Elementary School, who has been selected as the 2018-19 Assistant Principal of the Year for Cabarrus County Schools. Lucas was surprised with this news at Royal Oaks Elementary School on Friday, September 21st during the staff meeting. Lucas joined Cabarrus County Schools in 2011 as an elementary teacher at Carly Fur Elementary. In 2015, Ms. Lucas became an Assistant Principal at Charles E. Boger Elementary, and then moved to Royal Oaks Elementary School as the Assistant Principal in 2018. Prior to serving in Cabarrus County Schools, Ms. Lucas taught elementary school in a neighboring district. Ms. Lucas graduated with a bachelor's degree from Appalachian State University in elementary education. She also earned a master's degree in reading and education from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, and a graduate certificate in school administration from Appalachian State University. CCS Assistant Principals nominate and vote among their peers for the Assistant Principal of the Year based on a set of criteria. The top candidates are then interviewed by a panel of district administrators, and a winner is selected. This year, the congratulations goes to Ms. Lucas, our 2018-19 CCS Assistant Principal of the Year. Congratulations. Okay, we'll leave them through there.
Our next agenda item is to recognize our own Superintendent. Cabarrus County Schools is proud to announce that Superintendent Chris Louder has been selected as Superintendent of the Year by Regional Education Service Alliance, RESA. Dr. Louder was nominated and selected by his peers for this honor, and will represent the Southwest Region. Dr. Louder will now compete for the A. Craig Phillips State Superintendent of the Year, which is jointly sponsored by the North Carolina Association of School Administrators, the North Carolina School Superintendents Association, and the North Carolina School Boards Association. So we are wishing you well at our annual conference in Greensboro. The state award is given annually at our conference, and the state winner advances to compete for the American Association of School Administrators National Superintendent of the Year Award. And I failed to invite Dr. Louder's family to join us up front. Even though I made myself a note, I don't read my notes. And just a little background for Dr. Louder. He was named interim Superintendent of Cabarrus County Schools in March of 2015. He was officially sworn in as the district's 10th Superintendent in December 2015. Throughout his tenure, he has served as an Assistant Principal, Principal, and Director of High School Curriculum. Under his leadership, the district's graduation rate climbed to new heights and consistently outpaces the state and national averages. He is a native of Cabarrus County, so I like to say that we grew our own here. He attended Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapla City Schools, and is a graduate of AO Brown High School, the one thing we will forgive him for. He earned a bachelor's degree in English Education from University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, even though he is a Duke fan, and has two master's degrees, one in school administration and another in English, as well as his doctorate in educational leadership from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. And while one daughter is present here with Mrs. Louder, the second daughter is at Carolina, is it? Okay, so. I will now ask Vice Chair, Mrs. Carpenter, to present her certificate.
And I do have a certificate of excellence, which we're going to present to Chris Louder, Superintendent of Cabarrus County Schools, in recognition of your selection as the Southwest Regional Superintendent of the Year, October 8th, 2018.
Next, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4.04 and ask, actually, you have to go back down there, Dr. Louder, Mrs. Jones, and Mr. Tim Vaughn from Hillbush Ford to join us up front to present the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board Members. Welcome, Mr. Vaughn. It's good to have you with us this evening. Again, we sincerely appreciate Hillbush Ford and your continued sponsorship for Cabarrus County Schools and this recognition program. So at this point, our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for October is Noah Driver. Mr. Driver, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. Noah Driver teaches English Language Arts at Concord Middle School. He was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "My child comes home from school telling me how much she enjoys Mr. Driver's class. He creates a positive learning environment without the students even realizing that they're learning. He incorporates music into his ELA class, teaching students point of view, how to show supporting evidence, plot, and summary. My daughter looks forward to going to school each day, to what lyrics they're going to dissect." The parent concluded, "His students are learning in fun and creative ways. I would love to be able to sit in Mr. Driver's class and take in all the knowledge he has about how to make learning fun." Mr. Driver, congratulations on your selection as the Teacher of the Month, and thank you for making learning fun for your students. Please allow Mr. Vaughn and Dr. Louder to present you with your award, and then allow our board members to congratulate you once we get a photo up here.
So I just need Mr. Vaughn next to, there we go. Well, okay. If we could just squish together a little bit, you guys like to like one another. Okay, guys.
Congratulations.
And next, we'll have the Career and Technical Education Honors, and welcome Mr. Ben Alred.
I'm substituting tonight for Mr. Parker, so on work-related business in Raleigh Forest with CTE. Could I have Mason Saunders and Cody Alward, their families and/or administrators too, come up? Skills USA is a national organization, serving teachers and students in high school and college who are preparing for careers in technical, skilled, and service occupations. The Skills USA Championships are competitive events showcasing the best career and technical education students in the nation. Contests begin locally and continue through the state and national levels. Mason Saunders is here with us from Mount Pleasant High School. At this year's Skills USA National Leadership Conference, held in Louisville, Kentucky, Mason won first place in the National Masonry Competition. His teacher, Mr. Cody Alward, also here tonight, who is not only a wonderful teacher, but was himself a National Masonry winner for Skills USA. We congratulate both gentlemen for an awesome showing at National Skills Competition. Congratulations.
If I could have Mr. Todd Hartzell and any family and support staff that are here with him tonight?
Well, masonry's in the air tonight, so. This is a letter I'm reading from Darren Bridges, who is the President of the North Carolina Association for Career and Technical Education Teachers for Trade and Industrial. So I'm going to read this letter for you. Todd Hartzell was selected to be the 2018 North Carolina Association for Career and Technical Education Teachers of the Year for Trade and Industrial. He's been teaching in Cabarrus County Schools as the Masonry Instructor at Central Cabarrus High School for over 20 years. As a Skills USA Advisor, he has coached students who have won nine National Skills USA Championships, and now serves as the World Skills Bricklaying Expert for the United States World Skills Team. We would like to recognize him for being a dedicated career and technical education teacher, and making a lasting impact on student success and education and career opportunities. Thank you. Congratulations.
And now we'll welcome Ms. Ronnie Boone for Impact Through Education Awards.
Good evening. Last month, I announced that we had a new sponsor for the Impact Through Education Awards, AXA Advisors. I am pleased tonight to introduce you to two representatives from AXA Advisors, Mr. Benjamin Sloan and Mr. Adrian Caspar. If you gentlemen would come forward for a second, please. Did you want to say a few words first?
Sure. Okay. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. Just wanted to say thank you for having us. It's an honor to be partners with Cabarrus County, and just a great district, and a lot of really awesome things going on, great people, and we thoroughly enjoy working up here with y'all. Wanted to just make a quick announcement. This is an awesome award that we're giving out, but we're also giving out a lot of other scholarships right now to students that are high school seniors. So for anybody that's in the crowd, or anyone up here, if you know a high school senior, we have something that's called the AXA Achievement Scholarship. Easily just Googleable. There's a website if you just type in AXA, which is A-X-A-Achievement. We give away a $10,000 scholarship for college for anybody that wants to apply online. And then we also give multiple $2,500 scholarships to people that went on the regional level. The reason we're letting everybody know is the way that we give out these scholarships is based off of volume of applications per region. So the more people that apply in Cabarrus County Schools, the better chance we'll be able to present that scholarship to y'all at some point. I've personally given scholarships to Union County, Charlotte Mecklenburg County, and would love to have Cabarrus County get some of that money from us. So AXA Achievement, definitely check that out. And also, the school gets a $1,000 grant if one of their students wins. So hopefully, we can take advantage of that, and it's great to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So they're going to stick around and help us present the Impact Through Education Awards this evening. Before we get started, though, I do want to say welcome and thank you to Ms. Cindy Parada and her students from Coxmo High School, from one of the broadcasting classes. They're here this evening videotaping this segment of the meeting for a special presentation for our Capco Schools TV 21. So be sure to be on the lookout for that. And so now, on to our awards. We will be recognizing Mount Pleasant Elementary School and the Performance Learning Center. And up first is Mount Pleasant Elementary School, so I'd like to invite Mr. Cory Cochran and his administrative team back to the front of the room, please. Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary School this evening is Kaitlin Coley. Would Kaitlin and her family please come forward? Just squish in. Can make room, but we need to squish in together. There you go. Kaitlin is a fourth grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. She is multi-talented. She loves playing the piano, taking art classes, building and playing with Legos, and is a member of the robotics team at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Her teachers say that Kaitlin is the type of student they would like to clone in the classroom. She listens intently before speaking, thinks her answers through clearly, is willing to work with anyone, and is kind to all. She has a wonderful personality and is a true friend to all the students at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. When you see Kaitlin in the hallway, she always has a smile and kind words of encouragement for others. In class, Kaitlin strives to do her best and is a positive role model for those around her. Kaitlin enjoys AIG class and the challenges that it presents. She continues to push herself to learn more. Her favorite subject is science because she enjoys the experiments. She loves reading books, playing with her animals and her sister, helping others, and she's always, and she always tries to include everyone. Simply put, Kaitlin has a heart of gold. Congratulations, Kaitlin, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Our next Mount Pleasant Elementary School honoree is Aiden Saxman. Would Aiden and his family please come forward? Our next Mount Pleasant Elementary School honoree is Aiden Saxman. Would Aiden and his family please come forward? Our next Mount Pleasant Elementary School honoree is Aiden Saxman. Would Aiden and his family please come forward? Aiden is also a fourth grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. His teacher says he is the poster child for everything a teacher could possibly want in her classroom. Aiden is kind to everyone, hardworking, even if it's something that he doesn't, that does not come easily to him. He's cooperative. World Skills Team. We would like to recognize him for being a dedicated career and technical education teacher and making a lasting impact on student success and education and career opportunities. Thank you. Congratulations.
And now we welcome Ms. Ronnie Boone for Impact Through Education Awards.
Good evening. Last month, I announced that we had a new sponsor for the Impact Through Education Awards, AXA Advisors. I am pleased tonight to introduce you to two representatives from AXA Advisors, Mr. Benjamin Sloan and Mr. Adrian Caspar. If you gentlemen will come forward for a second, please. Did you want to say a few words first?
Sure.
Okay.
Hope everyone's doing well tonight. Just wanted to say thank you for having us. It's an honor to be partners with Cabarrus County and just a great district and a lot of really awesome things going on, great people, and we thoroughly enjoy working up here with y'all. Wanted to just make a quick announcement. This is an awesome award that we're giving out, but we're also giving out a lot of other scholarships right now to students that are high school seniors. So for anybody that's in the crowd or anyone up here, if you know a high school senior, we have something that's called the AXA Achievement Scholarship. Easily just Google-able, there's a website if you just type in AXA, which is A-X-A Achievement. We give away a $10,000 scholarship for college for anybody that wants to apply online. And then we also give multiple $2,500 scholarships to people that went on the regional level. The reason we're letting everybody know is the way that we give out these scholarships is based off of volume of applications per region. So the more people that apply in Cabarrus County Schools, the better chance we'll be able to present that scholarship to y'all at some point. I've personally given scholarships to Union County, Charlotte Mecklenburg County, and would love to have Cabarrus County get some of that money from us. So AXA Achievement, definitely check that out. And also, the school gets a $1,000 grant if one of their students wins. So hopefully, we can take advantage of that, and it's great to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me get y'all to stand on the tape right there. So they're going to stick around and help us present the Impact Through Education Awards this evening. Before we get started, though, I do want to say welcome and thank you to Ms. Cindy Parada and her students from Coxmo High School, from one of the broadcasting classes. They're here this evening videotaping this segment of the meeting for a special presentation for our Capco Schools TV 21. So be sure to be on the lookout for that. And so now, on to our awards. We will be recognizing Mount Pleasant Elementary School and the Performance Learning Center. And up first is Mount Pleasant Elementary School, so I'd like to invite Mr. Corey Cochran and his administrative team back to the front of the room, please. Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary School this evening is Caitlin Coley. Would Caitlin and her family please come forward? Just squish in. Can make room, but we need to squish in together. There you go. Caitlin is a fourth grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. She is multi-talented. She loves playing the piano, taking art classes, building and playing with Legos, and is a member of the robotics team at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Her teachers say that Caitlin is the type of student they would like to clone in the classroom. She listens intently before speaking, thinks her answers through clearly, is willing to work with anyone, and is kind to all. She has a wonderful personality and is a true friend to all the students at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. When you see Caitlin in the hallway, she always has a smile and kind words of encouragement for others. In class, Caitlin strives to do her best and is a positive role model for those around her. Caitlin enjoys AIG class and the challenges that it presents. She continues to push herself to learn more. Her favorite subject is science because she enjoys the experiments. She loves reading books, playing with her animals and her sister, helping others, and she's always, and she always tries to include everyone. Simply put, Caitlin has a heart of gold. Congratulations Caitlin on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Our next Mount Pleasant Elementary School honoree is Aiden Saxman. Would Aiden and his family please come forward? Aiden is also a fourth grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. His teacher says he is the poster child for everything a teacher could possibly want in her classroom. Aiden is kind to everyone, hardworking, even if it's something that he doesn't, that does not come easily to him. He's cooperative, dependable, and respectful at all times. He's patient with those in need, naturally intelligent, thoughtful, and empathetic toward others, responsible, and he even has a great sense of humor. Aiden brightens other students' days with his optimistic presence and definitely makes his teachers' day better. Aiden's favorite subject is math. He has always enjoyed working with numbers, and he also loves sports. At a young age, he learned to work with numbers due to his sports passion. He could identify all of the race car numbers and count by sevens for touchdowns and an extra point. He currently plays for the 10 and under Copperheads Travel Baseball Team. He has played baseball since he was four, and his favorite position is catcher. He's played basketball since he was seven. Currently, Aiden wants to be a football player when he grows up, but this tends to change with the sport that is in season. When Aiden is not playing sports, he enjoys spending time with his family and friends. Congratulations, Aiden, on receiving an Impact Through Education Award for Mount Pleasant Elementary. Our next Mount Pleasant Elementary honoree is Ms. Amory Furr. Would Ms. Furr and her family please come forward? Amory Furr has been at Mount Pleasant Elementary School for a little over one year. Her bright and shining personality, her love for her students and her fellow staff members, and her commitment to sharing her love of art has quickly impacted the school and made it a better place. The phrase "once a tiger, always a tiger" holds true for Amory, as she was a student and graduate of the Mount Pleasant Schools and has returned there to her roots. Her peers say Amory has touched the lives of students and staff. Her student-created Staff Appreciation Wall encouraged all of the school's staff members. The school is a better place because of the environment she creates, with the optimistic artwork displayed around the building, which creates a colorful, inviting, and welcoming atmosphere in the school. She introduced International DOT Day to the school, which inspires students to make their mark on this world. Amory exudes a positive energy to all who are around her with her boundless energy and innovative ideas. She's always willing to go the distance to help her colleagues, making a banner or painting an uplifting quote on the wall. Her creativity reflects through the artwork her students produce. The student artwork and the creative way Amory displays it have brought much cheeriness throughout the halls of the school. Mount Pleasant Elementary is fortunate to have someone as positive and uplifting as Amory on the team. Thank you for making an impact through education, and congratulations. And our final honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary School this evening is Mr. James Wilson. Would Mr. Wilson and his family please come forward? James Wilson has been the head custodian at Mount Pleasant Elementary for almost six years. He consistently shows immense pride in his work and in making sure the school looks the best that it can and that all students or staff, and staff are in a safe and comfortable building. James is a jack-of-all-trades, playing bass guitar and drums, modeling at special events, and loves fixing things and working with his hands. Staff members at Mount Pleasant Elementary say James goes above and beyond the call of duty for the faculty, staff, and students. As the school's head custodian, he ensures that the buildings and grounds are clean and safe. He has a positive attitude with both teachers and students. He is asked quite often to do tasks at a moment's notice and does not hesitate to get the job done. His strong work ethic and humble demeanor make him an outstanding role model. He has participated in school-wide activities such as reading to classes during the One School, One Book Program, and jamming during a talent show. What sets James apart is the manner in which his efforts are delivered. The delivery of his efforts is always a joyful heart. We can be, he can be wiping the sweat from his brow with one hand and helping someone with the other, but is, but it is, it is his joyful heart that is contagious. He is such a blessing to everyone at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. His help is always appreciated, but it is his joyful heart that is admired. Thank you for making an impact through education at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Now for our Impact Through Education Award honorees from the Performance Learning Center. I'd like to invite the principal of the Performance Learning Center and any other administrators from his school that are here to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from the Performance Learning Center is Jair Sanchez Martinez. Would Jair and his family please come forward? Jair is a model student. This is his second year at the Performance Learning Center. He always completes his courses ahead of schedule and with high grades. His leadership skills are evident. He supports students who are struggling and acts as a mentor to new students as they are adjusting to the PLC environment. He displays not only intellectual skills, but the social skills that will take, that will make him a valued member of any organization that he joins in the future. Jair plans to complete all coursework for his high school diploma by December. He will then take advantage of the Career and College Promise Program to take courses at Stanley County Community College to pursue a career as a medical assistant and medical interpreter. Congratulations on receiving this Impact Through Education Award, and congratulations. Our next honoree from the Performance Learning Center is Jayanna Rich. Would Jayanna and her family please come forward? Jayanna is in her second year at the Performance Learning Center, and she excels in many areas. Every day, she shows up with a positive attitude and demonstrates a tremendous work ethic. Jayanna is a quiet student leader who leads by example. She always finishes her courses early and will graduate ahead of schedule. Her teachers say that she will never quit. She battles through adversity and always sets her goals high. Jayanna is the type of student whose attributes can sometimes be overlooked in a larger setting. Her smile and attitude are infectious and will help her as she pursues her goals of studying drama and arts in college and eventually of becoming an actress. Congratulations, Jayanna, on receiving an Impact Through Education Award for the Performance Learning Center. Our next PLC honoree is Mr. Ken Small. Would Mr. Small and his family please come forward? Mr. Small has been teaching career and technical education courses at the Performance Learning Center for 10 years. Coming from a business background, Mr. Small is a mentor for many students as they prepare for their years after graduation. He uses his many connections in the community to benefit the school and its students. One of his students said, "Mr. Small is a very nice teacher. He always makes sure that his students are on task and that they do well in his class. He will help you in any way that he can, and he always gives good advice." This summer, Mr. Small organized a fundraising charity motorcycle ride for the school that raised $4,500. All proceeds will go directly to the students in need of basic necessities. Mr. Small also applied for and earned his commercial driver license to make field trips more affordable and available to the PLC students. Congratulations, Mr. Small, and thank you for making an impact through education at the Performance Learning Center. And our final honoree from the Performance Learning Center this evening is Mrs. Bonnie Emery. Would Mrs. Emery and her family please come forward? Mrs. Emery is entering her fourth year as the data manager at the Performance Learning Center, but she is more than a data manager. She is an essential person in the support of PLC students. In addition to performing her required duties, she takes it upon herself to mentor and coach many students in need of support. If a student is struggling with attendance, Mrs. Emery finds out the real causes and either motivates the student to do, to do better, or finds the resources they need to help with their situation. When a student was asked to describe Mrs. Emery, she said, "She helps out. She is kind, supportive, and pushes you harder. She is sweet and makes me a better person. It does not feel like she is fussing at you. You could call it fussing, but it's encouraging." The Performance Learning Center is fortunate to have the talents of Mrs. Emery. Congratulations on receiving this award.
And now, we will move on to Agenda Item 4.07, and I'll just call this the Point of Privilege from the standpoint of sharing information and the success of the Cabarrus County Nine School Tools Drive that was formally held in August, from August 1st to 26th. And Adam, can you pull up that, please? So we are grateful to Channel 9 and their, I'll say, oversight activities, things like templates, barrels, advertisement on Channel 9, their television. The idea for this was actually inspired probably 22, 24 years ago by Catherine Campbell, our now-retired executive director of our local communities and schools, and her passion to provide school supplies to all students in need. Our goal this year started with taking advantage of the opportunity with Channel 9 to support Cabarrus County Schools and Conneplis City Schools. I approached former board member Holly Grimsley about her Rotary Club being the local nonprofit sponsor in kind of a selfish way because they were based very near to my home. The Concord-Afton Sunset Rotary Club was all-in with their time, talent, and treasure. We engaged with Channel 9's Family Focus Team, obtained school supply collection partners, including Ashley Home Store, which we have one in Afton Ridge Shopping Center by the Target, who was actually a corporate sponsor for Channel 9. The West Cabarrus Y, so thank you, Dr. Kirk, for participating. Walmart Concord Commons, Chief Ray Allen and the City of Concord Fire Stations jumped in with two feet. Uwari Banks in Mount Pleasant and Concord, Hilbush Ford, so I think Tim Bond might be gone, but thank you again. The Ben Minat Family of Dealerships. Some additional locations were Head to Toe Salon, Grimsley Jewelry, The Gem Theater, Alan Tate Team Honeycutt. Oops. Thank you for going back. The Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce, St. James Catholic Church, Sun Martial Arts, Ferguson Hayes, Hawkins and DeMay Law Firm, and the Concord Rotary Club was a tremendous participant and kind of held their own drive for us. The first steps were to obtain some space in a mobile unit that was temporarily used for storage. So our staff offered to move all those old tables. I said, "No, we need those for sorting." So they, we just lined up all the furniture that was stored in there and used it. And a special thank you to Team Honeycutt for providing their truck to transport the barrels, and to the WSOC team for loading the truck. I mean, they jumped in. There are 22 districts who were participating with Channel 9 this year. So I'd now like to ask the Sunset Rotary Club to come up because they're going to be in some of these pictures. If the members who are here, I see Anthony. If the members who are here, I see Anthony. So Holly and Charles Grimsley. Sue Cunningham. Jim DeMay. Anthony Weiss. And LaDerrick Blackburn. And LaDerrick is actually the Concord Assistant City Manager. So we had people from all over the place engaged with this. You can proceed, Adam. So the first event was Stuff the Bus Event at Walmart and the Mount Pleasant High School Band. So if Bart is still here, thank you for bringing them out, came out to entertain us. We also have the Concord High School Band, and during the day, we had Mr. Harrison join us to participate and help gather supplies. And Mr. Walter joined us as well. One quick, if you can put a hole on that so it won't turn. One quick funny thing, Walmart's Acid Protection came out of the store to ask me, you guys have heard some of the story, if someone had taken our supplies, and did I know this individual, and it was Mr. Harrison.[662.73][662.73](Laughter). He was barrel diving in the store to get the supplies onto the bus. And also, a special thank you to Art Whitaker from Transportation for bringing the bus down from the bus garage down to Walmart. The Rotary Club is pictured at the left there, some of the members. And on the right is Sinead Taylor, who was my primary contact at Channel 9. Sorting and donations. These folks saw what that mobile unit looked like after unloading the bus into cars and then getting them up. It was incredible, the support of the community. The little picture from the whiteboard in the upper right is what we started with as far as distributing supplies. And every barx start with 200 pencils, eight dozen colored pencils, four dozen pens, two book bags, with the largest ones for the high schools, and four post-it notes. We knew we had enough to deliver all of that. So some deliveries, Mr. Cochran, you'll see yourself in one of those pictures there with Mr. Grimsley. Rob snuck your picture in there, Carolyn out at Odell. There's some more pictures on the... J.M. Robinson welcomed us. The PLC, so they were just here, they're in the photos, too. Urban on the bottom middle, the Fur Falcons in the upper right, and then Mr. Shue from Central wore his Central Viking shirt, so we were sure to know he was the right person to pick up his supplies. And Susan Smith was on the right in that last picture. She couldn't be here tonight, but she was really my conduit to get things done. So by the numbers, I know some of the Rotary members know this, but not everyone, two districts served, 48 schools, 20,333 items collected. That just amazed me. And when you think, yes, the pencil counted as one, but so did a ream of paper, and so did a calculator that cost 20 bucks. So all of those counted as one. Some things wore packs, crayons, colored pencils, those were all in packs. So we were pretty excited. So we want to thank to our caring and giving citizens, to the many businesses who host the collection boxes and barrels, to the club who provided so much manual labor and transportation, to the Cabarrus County School staff who assisted in any way, to the commissioners and school board members who assisted, and thank you to the many individual school supply drives hosted by churches, book clubs, and other community organizations which benefited specific schools or neighborhoods. They were not a part of our drive, but I know there were a lot of individual drives that were occurring out there as well. So again, thank you to Rotary Club for jumping in feet-first with this. We certainly appreciate it. So I have a couple of thank you notes from schools here for you guys. Oh, yes, so the red bag over on the right. And the Rotary Club has one more presentation. If Mr. Cochran could come up, we had some late donations. He's back here.
And Madam Chair, while we're waiting for Mr. Cochran, you must have put in 40, 50, 70 hours in this yourself for quite a whole lot.
Some very hot trailers as well, I hear.
Cindy Furtinbaugh did a great deal.
Probably a little more than that, but...[893.12][893.12](Laughter). But LaDerrick, if you'd like to give...[895.62][895.62](Laughter). We realized we had missed picking up donations at one place, and so we're giving them to Mr. Cochran for his school.[907.51][907.51](Laughter). And just as information, they've tentatively signed up for next year. Okay, next, board members will move on to the approval of minutes at 5.01. We have the minutes for the September 4th work session and September 10th business meeting. Do you have a motion to approve them?
Second.
Second.
So we'll do Mr. Harrison, and I want to give that one to Mr. Walter as a second. Any comments? All over there say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 7-0. Next, we have the board chair comments. You really don't want to hear me talk anymore, but one thing I wanted to share is just as a reminder... Sorry, my mic was off. As a reminder, the Cabarrus County Education Foundation luncheon is on Wednesday from 11:30 to 1:00. Mr. Shoemaker, Mr. Harrison, you want to make any comments?
The Education Foundation is just doing marvelous work for educators in Cabarrus County Schools. It is headed by Ms. Amy Goff, who is our executive director, and just puts a great deal of passion into providing associations with the business community and creating a good, strong network with our business owners in the area and providing usually classroom grants for teachers so that they can proceed with the expenses that otherwise would come out of their pockets, quite frankly, without something like the Foundation. So I think a great deal of good work is being done by the Foundation, but it stays off the radar, and a lot of people don't realize the good work that it does behind the scenes. So hats off to Ms. Goff and the other executive board members.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. So there's still time to join us at the luncheon. The other thing I'd like to mention tonight is that the Cabarrus County Schools is championing a Bullying Prevention Month throughout October, and to join the staff at the schools, the staff at the county office, all of the board members have signed our pledge to be a champion against bullying, and Ms. Carpenter will give Ms. Reimer our Bag of Kindness donations. So we thought it was appropriate for us to participate as well. Ms. Carpenter, go down and get your picture made with Ms. Reimer. Oh, the go on the X. Ms. Reimer will give you our certificate as well. Okay, Dr. Lauter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several items to highlight this evening. First, a reminder to parents and students that our program Choice Fair takes place tomorrow night from 5:30 to 7:30 at J.M. Robinson High School. Come out and learn about all the choice programs, including STEM, IB, language immersion, as well as our National Academy Foundation certified programs. This past week in this room, the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust presented a workshop that had training for teachers, free materials, and they paid for the substitutes, our own Mr. Schwartz as part of that council. And a special thanks to Lynda Johnson for appropriating funds for teachers to be able to... She was very instrumental in teachers being able to get more training for that. This room was full with primarily our teachers, but some from other areas getting that training. That was very well received. October is National Bullying Prevention Month, as was just said. Cabarrus County Schools is proud to join in this annual effort. Throughout the month, our students and staff will initiate and participate in activities and events designed to encourage kindness and inclusion. We held the first of five community feedback sessions to help us gather input for our new strategic plan last week. I encourage parents, students, and community members to attend a session and share your thoughts. The next session is scheduled for this Thursday, October 11th, at Royal Oaks Elementary School. You can find the complete list of session dates on our district website. As you saw early tonight, we celebrated Mr. Cochran as being the Cabarrus County Principal of the Year. We're also celebrating all of our principals this month as it's National Principals Month. And I just want to take a moment to thank our principals for the incredible job that they do in our schools. They have a challenging job, leading and inspiring their staff and students and community. We very much appreciate the work they do every day. The annual college fair and financial aid night events are scheduled for October 17th and October 25th, respectively. The college fair will be held at the Cabarrus Arena. Visit our district website for details about each of those events. Several of our high school bands participated in competitions over the weekend. Congratulations to Concord High School's Marching Spiders for sweeping their class at the North Lincoln High School Roundtable Tournament of Bands, and to the Hickory Ridge High School Blue Regiment for its grand champion finish at the same competition. We also say congratulations to Mount Pleasant High's band, which was named grand champion at the Forest View High School Jaguar Classic. It's October, that means it's time for the 11th Annual King of the Court Volleyball Tournament. Students from every CCS high school and a few other area high schools participate in a fundraising event to benefit organizations that support breast cancer patients. The tournament this year is held at Concord High School on October 24th. The Student Realignment Committee will hold a public information session on November 7th at 5:30 at J.M. Robinson. The committee will present updated realignment options to the community. A few reminders about important dates coming up. It's hard to believe, but October 26 marks the end of the first quarter of this school year. October 29, students will be out of school for a teacher work day, and November 6, school will be closed for Election Day. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Lauter. We need like a whole list to put on the screen when you're talking with all those dates. Ms. Abbott, do we have any guest speakers tonight? Okay. Board members will move on to the consent agenda. The items included on that were decided last week in the work session and are listed in your agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So Mr. Shoemaker and Mr. Harrison? Who is?
Mr. Kirk.
Kirk. I got to watch, watch down there, whose fingers are going for the button. Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Harrison seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 7-0. We'll move to the action agenda and consider the approval of the Alex Subscription Agreement. Dr. Hill?
Good evening, members of the board. Last week, I brought to you the Alex Subscription Agreement, and tonight I'm seeking your approval.
Okay, and I see that they did add the, or you added the number of licenses included in the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Mr. Walter?
And I think we've talked about that earlier, but there's 18,100 licenses for this thing.
That's correct.
And if we don't use them, we still pay for them. Can you guarantee to us that we're going to be using all those licenses that we're paying for?
I am not guaranteeing that we're going to use all of those licenses, but I will tell you that I am a good steward of taxpayer dollars. So that figure was calculated based on the number of students that we have enrolled in math and also historically the number of students that scored a Level 4 or 5 in grades 4 and 5 for elementary school. So we do have a plan to utilize all of those licenses, and we do track that information. We do hold back a few licenses for any students that will be taking any of our summer onboarding courses.
And the only other question I have is, I guess, a couple of years ago, we were spending, was it $14.75 a student for 16,800 licenses? You'd think with a little more volume that the prices would be a little lower, but you're saying it's $16 a student instead of $14.75.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that question prepared, but I will tell you that we are spending $11.06 for 4,290 licenses and $18.18 for 13,810 licenses. So we are getting a discount because McGraw-Hill is part of the McGraw-Hill matching for the I-3 grant.
Okay, I did the calculation in my head just now, so that's why I was looking, looking to see what the prices were. Okay, thank you.
The current rate, the current going rate for the Alex is $45 per student. We do not pay anywhere near that.
I can't remember from the work session, but is there any teacher survey data of those teachers that are using Alex? Have they provided any of that for us?
I have not taken any survey data, no. I did do a survey when I started my first year here of all digital resources that we use and asked for comments on all of our digital resources, but I've not done one in the past two years.
And Dr. Hill?
I will say to that, I'm sorry, I will say to that that I get more contacts, people reaching out to me about Alex subscriptions than any other resources, primarily, when are we going to get it? Can we get more? Please turn it on.
And Dr. Hill, just to reiterate, I would look forward to some data in sometime in the future, possibly in our retreat in January or something, about the investment that we've made for several years now in the Alex program. But thanks for shepherding all of this for us, but I'm sure there's a lot of good information, maybe that data that could be crunched for us to help us get in context the investment that the community is making in this tool.
Sure, I'd just like for exactly what you would like, and I will say that...
Off-line, yeah.
Sure, I will, I will say that most of our schools purchase their own resources. They are allocated funds through ADM, and so they purchase their own resources. However, there are some resources that you get a bigger bang for your buck because it's bulk purchasing. So it is much more efficient and effective for us to purchase Alex at the district level because of the $45 price point. So if schools purchase just for their school, they're going to get charged that $45 price. However, when you purchase it at a bulk level, you're able to get it heavily discounted. So that's just a choice that was made prior to me being here, and we've just continued with that. But I'll be happy to provide you with any data. I just need to know specifically what you're asking.
And I'll do my homework.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, as Mr. Powell had mentioned, you know, you said you had originally surveyed when you first started. Well, since we had been utilizing this for quite a while, and now we have been in this for quite a while, and now we're starting to do quite an investment, and could you possibly do kind of a survey of the teachers to see how they do feel? You know, they could have changed their mind. You know, technology, technology does change, you know, quite a bit. Could we maybe do a survey?
Absolutely.
To see how they feel?
Absolutely.
And to how the, how it is working?
Absolutely. And, and to answer that question, we do do that on a routine basis. Last year, we did not include Alex, but we did do a roundtable for our elementary math resources because we do purchase an elementary math resource. So we pulled in some elementary stakeholders, had tables set up in this room. So we do do a review of our resources, but we will continue to do that in the future, yes.
Now, is this contract, is this, how long does this contract go?
It's just a one-year.
For one year?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there, are there schools that choose not to participate in Alex?
I don't have that information in front of me. I will say that it's not required. It is a resource that we provide. We do give a suggested amount of time that teachers use Alex, but there is no requirement from the district level. But we do know who is using it, yes.
Call for question.
I have one more question. Ms. Cuss, I'm guessing we will get the sales tax refunded at the end of the year?
Yes.
We should?
We'll get the 2%.
Oh, we only get 2% back?
Only the local.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mr. Shoemaker made the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion passes 6-1. Mr. Powell dissenting. Okay, thank you, Dr. Hill. Next, we have Agenda Item 9.02 with Hickory Ridge Elementary School Change Order Number 2.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm here this evening requesting approval for Change Order Number 2 for the mass rock removal at the Hickory Ridge Elementary School project. rock removal at the Hickory Ridge Elementary School project. A contingency funding has been requested and approved by the county commissioners at their September business meeting to fund this change order request. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, and this is for the 149,694 portion?
Yes, ma'am.
For the rock removal?
And for those in the audience, what is Change Order Number Two?
I'm sorry?
For those in the audience, what is Change Order Number Two?
Change Order Number Two is for the mass rock removal that has been encountered at Hickory Ridge Elementary School.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
So we have a motion by Dr. Kirk, motion, a second by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion?
And it's my understanding that is in that amount that we have already requested from the county commissioners, correct, in that $600,000, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is within budget, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I want to make sure that is, we are within budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was within the budget contingency.
No, the budget.
So they always anticipate these things to occur.
Okay.
We just wait to get funded. Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.[1610.13][1610.13](applause) Okay, and that is all that we have for our regular agenda tonight. I will take a motion that we convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318-1183 to consult with an attorney.
I would like to make, I mean, just.
Okay.
As a date.[1632.11][1632.11](laughter) I did want to remind the board of the, now, when is the luncheon?
Wednesday.
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 That's what David already said.
Oh, okay, yeah, but this is, I wanted to remind the board of, at 9 o'clock at AT Allen, we are having, for the real, for the real guarding at AT Allen, we're having the opening of that, if any board member was wanting to come to that, because we are having that with the sponsor and everything, so if you wanted to go out to that, we will be having that.
That's tomorrow, right?
That, well, is that when we're having the, next?
It's on Wednesday also.
Oh, on Wednesday also, at 9 o'clock that morning before the luncheon. So if anybody's wanting to come out that, but we will have the sponsor from Target there, Linda Johnson will be there, but if any other board member can come, we'd like to see y'all there, and then we can go on to the luncheon. But that's on the 10th also, so, so if y'all can come out, that would be wonderful. So I just wanted to make sure y'all are aware of that, but we're having that that morning at AT Allen.
Thank you. Okay, and I need to read these provisions tonight, because we have multiple things in closed session. I'll take a motion that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1183, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and to consider the pending case of Cabarrus County Board of Education versus the trustees of the Teachers and State Employees Retirement System in pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1186, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, or to review personnel recommendations in pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 1182, to prevent the premature disclosure of an honorary degree, scholarship prize, or similar award. I have a motion to approve, or to go into closed session.
So moved.
That was Dr. Kirk, and seconded by Mr. Walter. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session. Thank you all for joining us this evening, and have a good evening.